I will call this meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order in Millville, Massachusetts on February 20th, 2024 at 7:04 PM. Please stand for the Church Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A little quick round of introductions.
Roland Barrett.
Richard Remmels.
Andrew Hallward.
Jennifer Gill.
Peter Caruso, Town Administrator.
And we are down one Selectman member this evening, best of a quorum. And I will make a motion and move that the Board of Selectmen enter into executive session per Massachusetts General Law, C 30A, Section 21a 3, to discuss strategy relative to litigation, including but not limited to DeToma versus Town of Millville, where a discussion of these matters in open session would have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the town, returning to open meeting. Looking for a second.
Second.
Thank you, Andrew. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Roland Barrett?
Aye.
Richard Remmels?
Aye.
Andrew Hallward?
Aye.
Jennifer Gill is aye. Okay, so we enter into executive session. Okay, thank you. All right, we'll return to open meeting at 8:15 on Tuesday, February 20th, 2024. All right, so new business, ATM warrant, set open and close date, and discussion of possible warrant articles. So I don't have a calendar in front of me.
So the town meeting is May 13th, so the warrant has to be posted by April 29th.
Okay.
Currently, your meetings scheduled are April 2nd and 16th.
Okay.
So you might want to close, like, open the warrant tonight and close it no later than, say, April 12th. That allows for you to, you might want to close it sooner, so you have two meetings to review warrant articles. I have sent out the email for, you know, warrant article request forms, capital item requests and so forth, has gone out, so people are aware of this. I've received something from BVT, you're gonna meet with BVT on March 4th to go over that, as well as their budget. So, you know, when do you want to close it? Do you want to close it a month from now?
Well, we could do now until April 1st.
Okay.
And then that way, we could review on the 2nd and the 16th.
Is the election April 1st?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so we usually have the meeting that Tuesday, so then the 2nd.
That's correct, yes.
Yeah, okay.
So I'll go over what's come in then, but you won't see a draft of the warrant until, you know, the next meeting. That works.
Does that seem reasonable for everyone? Any other suggestions? We don't have to always do what I say. All right.
You should probably do a vote on that.
Yep, so I will make a motion that we open the annual town meeting warrant today on February 2nd, 2024, with a close date of April 1st, 2024. Looking for a second.
Second.
Thank you, Andrew. Sorry, I shouldn't have let you make the motion.
It's February 20th.
Did I say February 20th?
2nd.
Yeah.
You said February 2nd, you meant February 20th.
I'll amend my motion to February 20th, 2024, a close date of April 1st.
Perfect.
2024.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Roland?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Jennifer is aye. Okay. Discussion of possible warrant articles.
So, yeah, really, it's just the standard stuff so far. Do have, you will see something from BVT at your next meeting, which talks about roof stabilization fund is what they're looking to do. So there's a requested warrant article for that. And Millville's share of the cost of whatever happens to debt service on that, I think is 2.5% or roughly that going forward. So you'll see that, right now, there's about 12 grand of debt service in this upcoming year's budget, as well as this current year's budget. And the roof thing that they're planning, I think, is about 16 grand, and that other debt goes away. So it's, it's a, it's a little bit more, but not, not a bank breaker. Other warrants, I don't, you know, really don't know yet what you all want to do, what you need to do with stabilization funds, you know, what you need to do with, there's no bills of a prior year, but we'll know more as we go along, that sort of thing.
Is it time to buy a police car? Did we buy one last year?
Yeah, you bought two.
Okay.
So we're good on that. I really have very limited capital things. I have this thing from BVT, Dr. DeFalco mentioned something to me regarding capital items that they're talking about, but it's, may not require a capital committee meeting. It's really some, he may talk about it later, but it's really not much, and it's just an addition to things. So it's no warrant article related to that. The warrant article for OPEBs will likely be the same as before from BMR, their standard warrant articles. But again, nothing's been turned in yet, so I don't know much more than that at this stage, but the things that we normally see. Good, you know, snow and ice. At some point, you're probably gonna be dealing with a snow and ice deficit, and you'll have to vote to approve deficit spending, but I don't have that at this point. Hopefully, we're under budget so far.
All right. Anything else? Does anyone here have a suggestion for our warrant article?
We did discuss before this meeting here, some placement costs for a police cruiser, so I am gonna explore maybe an equity lease.
Okay.
Kind of get some quotes.
Okay, that sounds great. All right, moving on. Presidential primary, March 5th, 2024, election warrant approval.
So you have seven of them to approve and sign.
Okay. So everyone wants to see a copy? Do you want to make a motion, Andrew?
Yep.
It's pretty norm.
So I'll make a motion to approve the presidential primary for March 5th, 2024, as presented.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Roland? Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Roland?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
So when might the favorite constable of the town?
I, that's a town clerk.
Get that in hand, yeah.
Could be as early as tomorrow. It's gonna be on her desk when she comes in.
That's fair enough.
I'll leave her a note to be sure to call the, the best constable the town has.
Well, be sure to let them know. Don't forget to send the bat signal up.
That's right.
It's okay to move on to the next one while you guys all sign? Okay. So, Peter, the M E C C.
Sure, so just letting you know, in your packet is a copy of a memorandum of understanding between Metacomet Emergency Communications Center and SEMREC, the Southeastern Mass, Southeastern Mass Regional 911 District, which is based out of Foxborough. And the MOU is about exploring a merger of the two dispatch centers. And really, it's merging into SEMREC and coming out of MECC, Metacomet. And so what you see is a, you know, I had a meeting last week, we met with the Board of Directors of the folks from SEMREC. Most of the public safety chiefs were there from all communities involved. It's 10 communities total at this point. All of the town managers, town administrators have the authority and did sign the MOU. It's not binding towards anything. State 911 leadership were also in attendance and are very supportive of this. They're not driving the bus on this. They're allowing the two, the two dispatch center leaderships to drive the bus, but they'll support it. I don't know if this is the long-term play for Mendon and Millville in talking to the chiefs. And so it may be the opportunity to go in a different direction, because we're kind of the tail of the dog, and we can't even wag the tail very much. So we'll see. It's a very aggressive timeline. The Board of Directors that I'm on will be meeting every other week. I've been involved in mergers and acquisitions in my private sector life, so I know what's involved in this sort of stuff, and so there's a lot of questions to be resolved. The ultimate fundamental question is how they split up the cost of the operation, okay? And the way SEMREC does it is they split it equally amongst the four communities currently involved in SEMREC. First is Metacomet, that we're part of, is based on essentially population tweaked for call volume. So those two methodologies are not gonna mesh, so we have to find a way to mesh the right methodology that will work for the little tail of the dog versus the big dogs in the, in the hunt here. And it, and there are things to be concerned about, grants, but 911 has committed to the 50% reimbursement for, over the next two years, for Millville and Mendon of their Metacomet. This won't happen for a couple of years, so we'll still get reimbursed, you know, reimbursed, or only have to pay half of our share of the cost of Metacomet, if you follow me. We've enjoyed three years of paying none, but now it's gonna be two years of 50%. But there may be other opportunities to squeeze some money out of State 911, because they would like to possibly keep the Metacomet facility as a backup emergency call center, and the entity Metacomet owns all of the assets. So that's a negotiation chip, if you will. Anyway, so that's, that's where that's at, just to keep you informed. It's gonna be a lot of work for both entities to get to somewhere.
What are the expected benefits to this merger at this point?
Well, I don't know whether there'll be any real, there'll be some cost savings, because there'll be some efficiencies of scale. I won't talk about those too much, because it might, you know, impact person, persons' livelihoods, but there certainly will be cost efficiencies. It will be into a much better, better equipped, better operated facility. It's in a former ATT building, so the, it's nuclear capable, you know, it'll survive a nuclear strike with four inch thick, four foot thick walls, that sort of thing. And, so I don't, you know, that, still to be determined the advantages, but part of the advantage that will come out of State 911 is enthusiastic about this, and so eager to provide grant funding for a combined entity, potentially more than they would do for the separate entities. I don't know that for a fact yet. The tower, they committed, the head of the State 911 was apologetic for the delay in us getting the tower. That's part of this MOU, you'll see there's steps listed. So we are guaranteed to get our tower paid for and installed, the installation provided by State 911, so no cost to the town to get a nice new tower up there. No, a used tower.
New to us.
Repurposed, but new to us, and a, and a real tower, so that's happening. Okay?
Any other questions? All right. Family Fun Day, National Night Out, consider establishing a planning committee. Richard, you made this go on the agenda.
Yeah, that was something we had, we had discussed. I kind of thought this didn't get much, much traction last year or the year before, and so is this something that we want to consider forming a committee for, and then possibly moving to, rather than National Night Out, maybe a weekend, do a whole day event, try to increase enrollment, anticipation?
Open to all of that? We just need to find people.
Need to find people.
To be on the committee.
Do we have, we have a parades committee, correct?
I don't know that you have anybody on a parades committee.
But there's still a department has a budget, right?
There's a line item in the budget.
It has a budget with 500 bucks in it.
Yes.
That's correct, yes.
That's gonna be one of my questions, yeah.
So I'm okay to doing, like, having this as a priority, but I wouldn't, I don't understand why we'd need another committee for it. I'd rather just have it delegate to an existing committee, instead of creating, trying to create more of a demand for volunteers when we're already running shortages with that.
So I don't disagree with that. Then what committee would you assign it to? And, because last time, last year, we had the chief work on it, and it was, like, way too much.
It was a scramble.
It was a scramble. He has too much to do. So can you think of an underworked committee, Andrew, that you would like to reach out?
I wouldn't say, I wouldn't say any of them are underworked.
I agree.
I would say, but I would say that it would be better to have an existing committee than to try to create a whole new committee. So, for instance, Parks Parade, if there's a budget item, maybe try to resurrect that. Just try to keep what we have existing, utilize that instead of.
Hosted by council and agent?
Yeah.
Meaning possible.
Another rest thinking of two, so they, there's a group that always does the, like, the Trash Day pickup, so I wonder if we want to.
Oh, right.
Yeah.
Earth Day.
Yeah. So I don't know if we want to, I don't think that we would link these, but it's kind of like, like town events, like, we're looking for members of the town to participate, so.
We didn't have a lot of people helping on Earth Day last year.
No, we didn't. I was the only one, I think, as she said, there was, like, me and a few other people. I always do my street.
So I would recommend Parks.
Okay.
As the, as the committee, not that I'm volunteering for Kevin Del Giszi, but he was pretty enthusiastic and helpful in one of these events that happened several years ago, right? Where I got dunked when Jackie's daughter and your daughter kept throwing balls at me, and I got left.
She has a good right arm. She wasn't a tennis, she'd be a pitcher.
And he happened to drop by today, because he was in the neighborhood, so I didn't have a chance to spend much time with him, but he's a good guy and very helpful. And there's, they have a budget that they typically don't use, and there also is this other parade budget, so between the two, I think it's close to six grand.
Yeah.
Wow.
That might be useful for this, because it could balloon into even further ripples, if you will.
Well, part of my thought was if we got this advertised earlier and later, do a little fundraising.
Yeah, all right.
So Peter, will you take the action to reach out to Kevin?
I sure will.
Okay.
Yep.
And then, maybe we should start, can we advertise on the signs outside here and outside the police station, to see if there are any volunteers?
So you're really, you're really not, so that is creating a committee, if that's what you're talking about, to advertise.
Well, because we're not gonna have Kevin do this all by himself, are we?
No. And he's got a committee that's very limited as it is right now. It's, I think his son's on it or something, and maybe Chief Coop is on it.
Perfect.
So how about I reach out to Kevin?
Okay, and see what he wants to do.
And Chief Coop, get their ideas about what to do, and whether you need to take action, and then we advertise for people, right?
Yeah, I'm not thinking we need a committee.
But they need volun, they need, they'll need help to do it.
We need volunteers.
Of course they need volunteers.
Yeah, okay, all right. Okay.
All right.
We'll get there.
We good there?
Yeah.
All right, so moving on to old business. So MES water status update. So summary of the 2-8-24 meeting with the school committee. So Mary Jude was at this meeting. Actually, Peter, do you want to go first? I can go second.
No, I don't, actually.
Okay, I'll go first. So.
No, I'd be happy to, however you want me to do it.
I will go first. So Mary Jude was at the meeting, I, she gave, you know, a good update, said that she was happy with the progress that we're making, but she did not lift or give direction as to when we would no longer need to provide bottled water, which is something we've been asking for. We did talk about bulk water. Chair Banacco asked her about that, and she said, look, I don't really like to do that, which was good. I'm glad that she said that in that setting, because it's just, you know, more confirmation of, you know, the things that we're saying is, we're conveying things and relating them We talked about our water testing, and how the trihalomethanes have been below the 60 parts per billion since July, and the trihalomethanes have been below 80 since October. We also talked about the votes that we took to memorialize that we'll provide water through November 1st, and then if any of the readings for the trihalomethanes or the halocetic acid go above their, the 60 parts per billion for the halocetic gas, or the 80 parts per billion for the trihalomethanes, then we would provide bottled water for additional six months. And over that six months, we would expect to see the water testing under those two things, and that would, that is what would lift the bottled water requirement. So at least we set kind of our own, we'll provide bottled water under these conditions, this is when we do not need to provide bottled water. Yeah, and I would say that despite all those assurances and the testing going well, the school committee still voted to keep the children out of the Millville Elementary School. I think that some people wanted to table it, to see if we got our test results, have we gotten February yet?
No, the test has been taken, but we don't have the results yet. It was done last week.
Yeah.
Did she provide guidance on how many quarters to, I guess, the average?
Mary Jude?
Yeah.
Like, it'll be by the end of this quarter.
Typically, two quarters.
Yeah.
That's what.
But for us, so it also happens that our very high number.
Well, four quarters are in the average, but typically two quarters before you, they lift the violation notices.
She didn't say lift the violation notices. It was, oh, yes, sorry. So yes, the violation notices, I'm confusing bottled water violation, violations. So at the end of March, if our readings continue on the same trend that they are, we will not be sending out bottled, the water notice violations. So, and I was hoping to have February, because I could do some math, and then I could figure out what the reading March, as long as it's under a certain number, and then, and because our numbers have been so low, like, I think the number to be under on the halocetic gas is actually gonna be higher than, like, what the benchmark is. Like, I think you, so I have to do the math on that, and like, just solve for that one, one month, but I believe that's gonna be true of both of them, especially when February 25th falls off, the February reading from last year, sorry, falls off. Peter, anything else to add?
Yeah, so the sample was taken last week. Rich was hoping to do it earlier, but he was sick for over a week, very, pretty sick. So he couldn't get out there till last week, took the samples. I may know by the end of this week, as soon as I know, I'll let you know, but we don't know tonight what the test results are. He's, so anyway, but more of the same, the school has been running the water to try and mimic, you know, normal usage, and so that's required, you know, keeping up with the chemistry to match the flow, and that's just chemistry.
Yep. So with the school not pulling, with the school district, sorry, not putting the children back into the school building, I think that gives us some things to consider in terms of providing bottled water and things like that, if it's just, and there's even debate on if it's really a public water source, because I don't know if there's 25 people in that building right now. It's been varying. I know that counting cars there and things like that, so I know people might carpool and stuff like that, but there's, it doesn't look like there's 25 people. I don't know if we want to go down the route of having that not be a public water source, because to put it back is not easy. So I just want to put that out there. However, I do think that we want to ask for an official order from Mass DEP on bottled water, since we are the only community in the Commonwealth at this time that is being asked to provide bottled water with similar water readings. Any other discussion on that? So I will make a motion that we ask Peter Caruso to request an order from Mass DEP regarding bottled water, and I'm looking for a second.
Second.
I'm gonna put Matt, Andrew, but Roland, you were right there. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Roland?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Jennifer is aye. Right here.
Okay.
And then, the other thing is, and I've been thinking about this a lot lately, and I think I mentioned this in the last meeting, like, that we could look at legal action, but we'll find out in, like, 2028 if that, if we were right or wrong. I think we're right, but it's gonna take years. So, then the other thing that I'm noticing too is, I don't hear a lot of outrage from the community. Like, I, we did get some surveys back, and a lot of them do say that they would like children back in MES, but no one's coming to meetings and expressing this outrage. No one's going to school committee meetings and expressing outrage. So it's like, I've lost sleep and things like that, being stressed about this and worrying, and no one really seems to care if we fix it or not.
Actually, I see more positive comments on putting a private school there, unfortunately.
You're such a punk with your private school.
But it's true, but it's true.
But I'm just saying, so I guess, there's a public hearing on March 7th, is that, for the school to, like, so I, we need to hear from the community, because I feel like I, I will fight hard for what the community wants, but I don't hear, I'm not hearing from the community, I need this, you need to do this, I can't believe you let this happen. Oh my God, like, I'm not really, so I'm willing to go to bat for it, but I'm not gonna go to bat by myself anymore, because I have, and it's uncomfortable for me, so. But if everybody else is like, hey, this is what I want you to do, I will lead the charge, carry the flag, use whatever saying you want. But I need to hear that, I need to hear it, and I don't think that we are. So, selectmen3@millvilleMA.org is my email. Please email me, I have a Facebook account. Please check, like, message me there, whatever you want. Like, I'm seeing some people, like, there's some, like, I can't believe this happened, the building's fine, they've worked so hard, but it's not this, like, tidal wave of requests.
Think you're about to get more emails about your car warranty.
That's, so, um, yeah, so that's, anything else on that? I have one more comment.
No.
So, and I also believe that, um, there's, the towns are going to get one building back, like, one way or the other, so, well, they're, sorry, there's gonna be one building not in use in the school district for the coming year, and I personally believe that no matter what we do, that none of the Blackstone members are gonna vote for it to be the Millville Elementary School. Because I rewatched meetings lately to get snippets and make sure I'm saying things correctly. Ooh, actually, I have, I have to correct something I said in meeting. And, um, at the August 31st, it was fix the water, fix the water, fix the water, and it's, like, testing really well, and doesn't matter. So, and I do want to correct the statement that I made in, in the meeting, it was actually at the school command meeting on February 8th. I said, Dr. Gillick will always be with us, and I should not have said always, because always implies forever, until the end of the earth, Armageddon and all these other things, I should be more specific. And we are working on a phase-out plan, and I gave Peter some thoughts, like, maybe we have a monthly check-in for, like, three to six months, and then a quarterly check-in for, like, six to 12 months, and then we have a, like, six months to one-year period of, like, will you take our phone call? So to kind of roll it off slowly, a trend, right, more of a smooth transition, so it's not just like, here today, gone tomorrow. But I said always be with us, implying into Armageddon or whatever, and that's not true. There will be a phase-out plan, but we are looking to step it out, so always was wrong of me to say.
Yeah, he's, yeah, I've said it before, because he admits that he is, he's a quirky individual. He's obviously passionate about what he does, and sometimes that passion overrules what he, comes out of his mouth a little bit, or doesn't, just maybe a little occasionally.
Hey, nice slides.
But he was very disappointed in the, you know, the, he was watching the live stream and texting me constantly throughout that meeting. He, he wanted me to correct things that Mary Jude was saying, but that was not the place to do that. We have a good relationship with her, want to continue to maintain it. Uh, we have a good relationship with her, want to continue to maintain it. Um, but he was not happy and he's really, you know, he feels like, why would he even bother? Certainly next year, given the decision that the school committee made. He's not, you know, doing water treatment is very expensive. It's probably averaging, you know, ten grand a person of realistic users over there who aren't even drinking the water. So that's very frustrating for someone in his profession. So, but I was able to at least bring him down from the ceiling and off the ledge. Um, uh, and so he, he will continue to transition to a new operator, which we're in the discussion phases of that and the timing of that process. Um, I'll, I'll also just say that the, the engineer who was doing the study or doing the preliminary, uh, engineering of the water line from Oxbridge, provided us, uh, an estimate and provide that to Mass D E P, because they wanted it for their grant request process. And I copied you on that and it's a, so I was taken aback by the number. It's a five million dollar estimate, assuming no bedrock challenges, right? That's a big number. And, uh, and principally, you know, it helps, so I happened to meet with doctor, with Representative Soder today as well. Mentioned that to him. He's going to try and persuade D Peter anti up more than certainly a million dollars, uh, maybe some multiple of that and or find other money. Because realistically, you know, where else the money come from? It has to be borrowed, yes, a low interest or no interest loan, but it's still debt service paying off whatever the amount is borrowed, even if there's no interest. And so that's a, that's a meaningful piece of the pocket change everybody has in their pocket to pay taxes, right? And it's not pocket change. So, uh, I just want to make sure we're all on the same page on that. As far as the correction of things, I know that, you know, I heard members of the school committee use the phrase that Mary Jude uses, uh, in terms of, you know, ensuring that the water testing results are proven to be reliable and consistent. But the Dr. Gulicks of the world would, would say that the reliable and consistent terminology is used only to determine the frequency of testing of certain things, not including disinfection byproducts. But still, it is a phrase that people can grasp and understand. So I understand how it was important for people who made the decision they made. Because we, you know, a, a layman's view of reliable and consistent, we're not there yet in terms of the confidence that, you know, people have in seeing the testing be this way forevermore or essentially forevermore. You can't guarantee that. So anyway, I just wanted to point that out. The Mass D E P use of reliable and consi- reliably and consistently is again for testing frequency of certain items they test, not including disinfection byproducts.
And she actually mentioned that in the meeting. And she was happy with the frequency of our testing and doing it all at the same time.
As far as the simultaneous testing, she's happy with that. Yes, that's not an issue. But she still was concerned about reliably and consistently. And it technically doesn't apply, but it does in a layperson's view. Follow me?
Sort of.
Sort of.
Um, anything else on water? Yes, sure. Yes, of course.
Just a question on, I know, Peter, you had talked about the automatic chlorine, um, system that was, I guess, ordered, what I heard, um, last time. Do we have any, uh, update as to when that would actually be in tested and worked?
No, no, we, we, I'm just told it's a couple of months out for sure.
So at, at best, that particular system, which I think is a double check, the way I view it, right?
Yes, it only improves.
That's watching or you got alarm bells that go off and then you've got this chlorine test that if the thing absolutely needs to be squirted, it squirts it.
It's more that it limits it squirting too much.
Top pot.
Top level.
Right, exactly. So, um, that, that particular thing, Peter, is that, I know it's the third of the three that you had for your, um, for your remedy for it. I- is that something that, um, would give more assurances to people if that was in, in positioning?
I think so, because again, it, overchlorinating causes the disinfection byproducts.
Right, it's almost a.
So you limit that, you know, you set the threshold based on, you know, how much is in the tank, how much is used. And, and so you just don't want to get out of control. And that's what's happened in the four real events that caused the twelve notices that the town has had to provide over the years.
If I remember correctly, that was more of a, um, situation of a human.
Yes.
Error, whereas this year would be something, that'd be one more check system.
Correct.
To prevent that from happening.
That's correct.
Make it even more, um, safe.
That's correct.
What would remain in the constant level that needs to be corrected.
That's correct.
Okay, so it's really kind of critical that that piece at some point in time, we know what it's in.
We agree.
Operating, working and, because that gives everybody confidence in that, correct? And the only other thing, if I may.
Yes, of course.
After two seconds.
You can have two things.
You said it was five million dollars for the, uh.
Line to Oxbridge, yes.
Not counting bedrock.
Yeah, assuming no bedrock.
We, and we know there's no rocks in between.
True, we're good.
No, there's none. I, I drove it today, I have to look for it, Peter, it's a fun thing. Um, the other thing is that, uh, and I think this is something that, um, wild shot. You've got a, um, drinking, public drinking, uh, water at, um, St. Augustine's. That well, it says right on it, caution, public, uh.
Public water supply.
Okay, that, um, if nothing else, um, from my vantage point of, not great in geography, but it seems to be a lot closer than Oxbridge. Uh, matter of fact, it's right down bottom of the hill. Um, when we, uh, cut that in and put that well in, uh, that was indeed fourteen gallons per minute. So you tell me, I, you know more than I do about water things, but I think fourteen gallons, as I understood it, is, is very healthy. Um, but I think the minimum on that is, is three and a half to be able to even get a house. But this is fourteen gallons, so it's quite a bit of water that, that's available under the surface there, okay? Um, I don't know, um, anything else about water, but I just thought I'd mention that because it appears to be a little bit closer than, than Oxbridge at a five million dollar cost. And the last thing I just wanted to say was, I heard, and I think, Richard, you had brought up about charter schools?
Private schools.
Private schools, things of that nature. Um, yeah, you really ought to take a look at, um, the restrictions in the state of Massachusetts uh, concerning, um, types of charter schools and what's involved with it. If you're having a hard time getting people to volunteer to be on the committee, I can tell you what, if you go with a Horace Mann type school or a regular charter school, the requirements and restrictions on those and the permission that has to be from the school committee and the teachers association, I don't think you've got a, a lot of chances to get a charter school there. Because it, it, you know, draw money away from the budget that are with the regional schools, which is one of the problems that we've had is other systems draw monies away anyways. So why would you put it in the school right next to Blackstone? I, I can't see it working. I don't think the teachers union who is going to allow it and say, no problem, they have to have a, have a, have a voice in it. I don't think charter schools, in my opinion, uh, are an answer that would make a lot of sense in terms of using that building for that purpose. The reason I mention that is because I think it's necessary to fully understand the two types of charter schools, the requirements of those, and I've got it all written down as to what it is. And you can see clearly, I don't think it'll work. Because the teachers are not going to allow that, that, that building to, to put in that. Because they're going to pull monies away. And the monies they pull away is a lessening of what is reimbursed to the district as it is. So that reduces the amount of chapter seven. That doesn't make sense. So I, 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 since, since, even though I think it was a good idea, I, I don't think if you really look at the fine print of what's required, I, I don't think it makes sense.
Well, I don't think we're making any decisions on that tonight. It's just something we wanted to.
It was just a comment based on, I know it's on your survey.
Yep.
And the reason I mentioned it is if it's on the survey, and I'm just trying to make it understood that unless I read it totally wrong, it doesn't make any sense.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, there are folks here in town that, uh, have been toying with the idea and they seem to be supporting it. And I think it's worth talking about. Doesn't have to be charter, could be a private. We could look at, we could look at a Catholic school.
There, there, there's a lot of requirements, that's all I'm saying. I think if you really look at the requirements on it.
Sure.
The permission that has to be had by the teachers association in the district. Why would they, why would they give you permission for that? That doesn't make sense.
For a charter or for a private?
Either or.
Yeah.
Because there's profit and nonprofit ones and the other.
Mm-hmm.
I'm not going to bore you with details.
Sure.
There's a lot of requirements.
Of course.
I looked at them and I went, holy smokes. I don't know if that makes a lot of sense. That's it. Thank you.
Sure. Um, the only thing, I'll just add a comment because you mentioned the water at St. Augustine's. So we, I've had other property owners also contact me to see if we wanted to connect to their water systems because they have, um, more volume and things like that. I don't think that we should be in the water business. We're not amazing at it and it's a big headache. Sorry, I was trying to think of a word that wasn't bad. Um, and so I would like to have us not be in the water business. That's my opinion. Now, if everybody else thinks, yeah, I'm one of five, although I don't know, people, it doesn't feel that way all the time, but I really am just one off of five. So that would be my opinion, that we don't want to be in the water business. But if everybody else thinks so, even just everybody else here, we could stay and look at other options, but I just don't think.
But if you're not going to be in the water business, are you suggesting that building shouldn't be used?
So, no, I'm suggesting.
Bring in, uh, truck water, things of that nature.
Well, she wasn't big on that. We talked about that in the meeting, yep.
So what is the option if you don't want to make, be in the water business?
So it's connect to Oxbridge?
Oh, my goodness, five million bucks?
Yep, that's the option number one. And we'll see what kind of support we can get from Mass T E P. And then Representative Soder came by to talk to Peter today. So he's a resource and I have to reach out to Senator Fatman. So maybe we could cobble together enough of it that we would have to go something lower to Millville taxpayers. I mean, it's a lot, like a lot of things we need to line up at this point. Because the estimate that Peter and I got when we did rough and tough, because I think Mary Jude told us is about a million dollars a mile. And so we did like, so it's one point four miles by roads or one point six. So that's one point six million. And then I did five hundred thousand for a pumping station and then some other things. So we're like, oh, two and a half to three million. So when this came back at like four point nine eight seven million dollars, I was shocked. I mean, I would thought I'd be off by, I didn't think I'd be off by two million dollars and I was, I was off by two million dollars.
We're talking with a four inch pipe, Peter? That.
Eight inch, I think.
Eight.
Eight inch pipe?
Yeah.
And then we'll be able to service some developments around there?
Yes, the idea, yes.
Terrible?
It's, yeah.
That's not terrible?
No, that's right, yeah, yeah, absolutely. And that's what's driving Oxbridge to want to do it, because they want to get development up that way.
Help grow a business district or a lot of their own.
And this also solves the challenges of the folks on Kempton Road with their water issues. So there, there are some advantages to it, but, um.
Maybe we'll start taking a third collection at churches and stuff. Millville Water.
You better sell the church.
It's a big, it's a big number.
We're going to give Jerry the boot and send him out in the intersection.
Yeah. I've got to give you a gun.
All right, anything else I have to say? Yes?
I, do I have to sit up there or am I?
Um, I think you should since you're not, you don't live in Millville.
I should introduce.
Yes.
Dan Keith from Blackstone School Committee. And can I just chime in on what you just said about the five million and connecting? Totally unrelated, but.
Yeah.
So if the line is going to come in, an eight inch line from Oxbridge and they're telling, is that Millville's expense, five million dollars? Just Millville's?
Yep.
But it's going to be Oxbridge's water system.
Yes.
If they can connect to new users, they're going to reap those benefits.
Correct.
So that five million dollar line shouldn't just be then shared by, should be not just the town of Millville's. If it was going directly to the school, then that would be Millville's responsibility. But if they're sharing it to gain more users, to increase more revenue.
Yeah, we can talk to them about that.
That's a negotiation point.
That just popped into my head as I was sitting, totally unrelated to why I wanted to come up, but I just wanted to share that. So I, um, I am, there's, it happens to be two school committee members here tonight. One from Blackstone, one from Millville, one who voted one way and one who voted the other. Um, and, and so, and, and so you said earlier, pretty much from the survey, and it seems like nobody cares about the water situation in Millville. And I actually do. And the school committee, I can speak on most, behalf of all of them, we do care. I would rather see the students, um, in, in M E S than the Kennedy, Mulley complex. And I've said that all along. And so, and I can only speak for myself as a member of the school committee that, um, at the beginning of this, back in, you know, when we first got the notice in February, then in, in May, we were getting, I was getting, my understanding was conflicting messages from your first water operator and then from your, your consultant, Dr. Gulick. So, so it was very conflicting, even to you guys, it was very, very conflicting. And then there was a, um, a lot of misunderstanding, um, I think in communications and everything. I think everybody can agree that there was a lot of misunderstanding in that. And I even said to you, Madam Chairman, in the meeting, you know, you inherited this over, over time. And I mean, ever, like I, in these meetings, I mean everything I say. Um, and, 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 and this is something that was inherited. This is something that's plagued the town for many, many years with, with the situation with the, with the water issue. We've heard it over the years. And so we have seen, and, and you, you know, the hard work of you and this board hasn't gone unnoticed. We've seen the results, we really have. But we wanted, you know, it was, in, in the workshop, I was the one who recommended, make the motion, recommended to bring to the, to the committee to, for the consistency in, in the usage, the water use. So that when we, because we would like to get those kids, I, as a one member, would like to get those students back there. But I would like to see consistency in the usage as it was if there's three or four hundred kids in, in the building. And, and, and even in the last meeting with Mary Jude there, she was under the impression that, that amount of water was being processed every day. And then she kind of said, well, it didn't really make a difference or not. But she was under the impression with the backflow, and I'm not going to get technical.
That was for the lead and copper, the lead testing, right? So, so yes, for, for lead testing, we, and we had to do it that way.
Right.
But, but for the other testing, I think it was very clear that we were not jacking it.
Differentiation for me for that, if it's, if it, you'd want still to have positive lead, good lead tests with that many kids in the building as well. So that's the way, you know, that's the way I looked at it. So I had re- made that recommendation that we had that to mimic a school year. I have like no intention of if that, as one voter of the school committee, if whatever that period of time turns out to be, I'll be the one, I, I'll be the one to make the motion to put those kids back there that following school year. So I mean, I don't, I don't care about the Facebook nonsense and all that, and that, you know, that's back and forth politics. But the fact is that I have always, in my capacity as a selectman in Blackstone, in, 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 in my position there in Blackstone, I've always supported working cooperatively with the town of Millville and I have a record to show it. And, and I appreciate that you guys come to school committee meetings and I'm willing to sit here in the hornet's nest with you guys tonight and, and take the hits. But I think there's a lot of misunderstanding and, and there's a lot of politicking and in, I can see in, in towns that people that may not be in favor of this board and people of other boards, and I see how that works. But at the end of the day, I for sure am looking for consistent, clean, safe drinking water for the, like I said from day one, for the students of the Blackstone Millville Regional School District at M E S, which includes Blackstone and Millville students. And, and so that's where I am. I mean, I have, I have not wavered from that. I think the school committee wants to see that. It wasn't like a, it's not a Blackstone, um, doesn't want, uh, the kids in Millville. It's just, I was on the regional agreement committee, the first one that failed with Millville's vote and then the second regional agreement that passed to include the kids, um, in the same buildings, in the same grades, which included kids in Blackstone and kids in Millville, which, um, from nineteen, you know, from nineteen eighty-two, when the, when the kids were regionalized in the elementary schools, they still had to go to their own separate schools. That wasn't until what, I think, two thousand twenty, that we were finally able to make it fair across the board for both Blackstone and Millville kids. I mean, the elementary school in Millville's in much better condition. It's a beautiful building and I would hate, you know, I, I don't want it to see, I would, I would rather see the kids how it's there. And so I, I thought this was, and my, my, my position hasn't changed on it. Once that water is, that, those quarters are done, it's consistent and we're confident. I mean, and I would just say, in our position, when we were getting so much different information and there's four hundred, three hundred, four hundred kids in that building, like to just throw them back in without consistent results. And, and you have had it for several months now, which is great. But throughout a school year, I mean, what had, you know, three or four months into it, you could have bad readings. It could, you know, we could fall off. It could, you know, we could fall off again. And I understand that you would provide bottled water and everything, but we're right back into that. Because, and I, I don't, I hope that doesn't happen. I don't think it's happened with the amount of attention. I think you would all have to agree, the amount of tension that has been paid to Millville Water in the last year has been probably more in the last, since last year than probably in the last, you know. I know that was on and off over the years, but you've really been on top of it. We have a consultant, a water operator, a consultant, a consultant that is the water operator that can't quit if he wants to. You know what I mean? Because I don't know what you have on it, but he's staying. And he's, he's.
He likes me.
He kept his word. He, he said, I'll stick to it and.
Yeah.
You know, and I, I am familiar with the cost of a water operation, you know, and, and I'm not, I'm no expert. I don't claim to be an expert, but it's, it's a huge investment in our town. And, and it's unfortunate you have a, a specialized public water supply in Millville that is only servicing three to 400 people at, at a time. But, um, which makes it difficult to invest that much when, when it's sort of, it's, you know, the bigger population, like getting back to that water line coming in from Uxbridge, the more users, the less it is. The, you know, in Blackstone, they're, they're enterprise accounts, so the users pay for the whole operation. So what you're kicking into now is from taxation. In Blackstone is the water rate payers are paying for the whole operation. So you're in a tough spot because it's such a small, uh, part of the population. But I absolutely want to see those kids back in Millville Elementary School when we have consistent, clean, safe results, which you're on the road to. You've, since July, you had positive results on one aspect and what, since, uh, September? On the other one. So I mean, that's where I've been since day one. And I, I don't want to speak for the entire committee, but I'm confident that the majority, if not all, the committee feels the same way. So.
So yes, I have two comments. So the first is in terms of like the water, like running the water certainly, all that, that, those asks didn't come until January. Like when I was at the August 31st meeting, it was fix the water, fix the water, fix the water. That was the directive we were given. There was no additional parameters given to us. It was fix the water. And the testing results have shown that we've done that. And we're about a month away from no water notices. So in March, we're not going to need to send water notices out and that building's not going to have students in it. Like, and if you were able to move the kids on July for the following school year, and we're going to have no water notices, and you felt the need to make the decision in February before you got the results for February, like it seemed, it's like you didn't want that data to make the decision. You didn't want to see another good water test and have to vote.
I don't know if I want to go down that. It, it sounds like you want to make things right. You, you, you hear, you support Millville. I'm very happy, uh, I'm very proud of the fact that you come up to the table and, and you spoke your thoughts. And it sounds like you're in favor of moving these kids back a, as soon as we can, so.
So we move them back this year if we fix the water?
Sounds like we're moving.
If the water's fixed, you can rescind your vote and man.
I, I, I support, so I support the district and I always have. And so I've never made any differentiation between Blackstone kids and Millville kids. As long as we're in a region and it's fair and equitable for both parties, I, I, I don't make any differentiation between those students. Now, as far as the consistency of the water, that, that, that ask, I made that ask. It had nothing to do with how, when your next, I didn't know when your next result was coming. And, and it wasn't in, in, in early January because we were finally getting communication on the, on the results that were starting to be consistent. So with that, we have, the purpose of my motion, um, is to, to, to give it the year was so that we can figure out the reconfiguration on what building we're going to use. That was the intention of my motion to do that.
That wasn't communicated though, in the, over the summer or anything like that. Like the motion was, oh, we'll move them for one year. So I thought we had a year to get everything right. And we're going to be not sent, like I said, I'm ver, I'm very confident, I probably shouldn't put my words this hard, this strong on this because Peter says all the time, anything could happen. But I believe we're not going to be sending water notices anymore after this quarter. Yeah, the last water notice that I think went out last quarter. So, and the motion was for one year. If you said, hey, we're going to, we're not going to move the children until we see 12 months of this or six months of that and all those things. But that was not stated. That was not stated last summer. And so I feel like every time we go to a meeting, it's, okay, well, now I need to see this, and now I need to see this, and I need to see this. At my workplace, we used to call this fetch a rock. Oh, I don't like this rock. I need a rock. So you go get another rock.
I want to re-steer this conversation.
Sure.
Uh, Mr. Keith, you're a businessman and so are I. Um, let's put the cards on the table. What's it going to take to get these kids back in the district, uh, or back in the building for September?
Oh, I, I don't, I, I.
I don't need you to speak on behalf of the committee.
Well, I'll tell you, on behalf of myself, it's, it is, is consistent, uh, results of clean water. And so four months is, after 20 some odd years of this is not consistent. I don't understand wh- where's the harm, where's the harm in, in the consistency, the, the, you know?
No, I think it's, I think that's a very fair, fair point of view.
Yeah, and it's, it's, this is not about Millville. This is not about this.
Sure.
Like the, the decision of this board. Yeah, so it always has been. And I don't, I'm not suggesting that this board is saying, you know, it's not about the kids. You know, this, this, this where I, like, this is where I've stood on this the entire time. And getting back to the summer, when I was sitting in those meetings, you had an operator and a consultant disagreeing with, you know, we, you had members of this board in, in, in town, and with all due respect, that weren't even sure that you were responsible for the water system. It was challenging the, the, the responsibility. So I mean, it's, it's come a long way. I, and, and I don't, I'm not trying to be critical, but it's come a long way. And, and this is the most positive results I've seen in, I don't, I don't know how long. I, I mean, I talked to guys, you know, that, that have been in town their whole life and were dealing with it, with the spending like the 600,000 on the water tank and all that other since 2005 or '06 or whenever that was going on, so.
So we've done a lot of fact finding and you've, I don't know if you've watched the past meetings. I've beat up Peter, I've sent him home with a couple of black eyes. I've certainly beat up a few things.
I can take it here.
Listen, you know, I, I sit up here and I, I beat him up. He still says him as favorite selectman, but I, I don't know.
He would never say that.
But, well, I don't know. He tells me I'm special. He tells me I'm special, at least, when I go home. But you know, you've heard me say, hey, listen, you've heard me say, hey, let's bring in bulk water. Let's give these folks some bottled water. Let's go to R F P. Let's go out and do a, a, a bunch of things to show that we are doing things in the right direction in good faith. And I think we have done a lot of that. And, uh, I still think we need to do a couple of R F Ps for bulk water and for bottled water, um, you know, but we're getting there. And, and we definitely, uh, you know, voted to, to, to give you bulk wa, bottled water in the event that, uh, you know, the readings did go, uh, south. It seems as though, um, that the, the water operator we had before, there was some sort of disagreement. Um, we have drafted some sort of a side agreement that we're looking at for water to ensure that, uh, we continue taking responsibility for it. So I don't think we disagree, at least this board disagrees, uh, that water is our responsibility. So, um, I think we've done what we can in good faith to show you that, hey, we're serious. Um, you know, that water operator made a mistake. Um, we're moving in the right direction. And, um, I'd like to see these kids back in, uh, for September. I don't think there's a reason why we can't have them back in there.
There's not.
Well, I, I just, I think that's what I said, that you've guys definitely have operated in good faith, especially in the recent months.
Sure.
And you guys were figuring this out for yourselves during that process. But, you know, we're sitting there, I'm sitting there as a school committee member, you know, watching two professionals hired by the town of Millville argue with each other, which, which is the cause of the problem. One guy quit, one threat, you know, and, and, and so at the end of the day, as an elected representative of the school committee, my responsibility is what's in the immediate, you know, best interest of, of, of the, you know, the, the district that I represent. So, I mean, I, my, just my end of it is if it's consistent over that period of time, which mimics the school year and those things are lifted and, and, and that's fine. I, I, you know, but I, I won't, I won't, um, I'm not willing to sacrifice just based on, and I'm, I'm hopeful and confident that those test results keep stay, staying positive. But I mean, I don't, you know, the, the, I think the testing by the 1,500 gallons a week or day or whatever that was would, because that thing ends in October or November, uh, with, 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 you know, starting on January 27th, the, the, the district, I, right, I specifically, when this was going on, reached out to the superintendent to check out with the M S B A. I, I wouldn't want this to adversely affect the district or the town of Millville on the loans or anything like that. That's why it's still part of the district. It's still active, is, uh, you know, um, facilities request, basketball, things like that, um, with limited interactions, uh, throughout the building. And, and, um, and I think if it's consistent for that period of time, I, you would have my word when that time comes. Well, we're, we're, we're made to feel assured by the, the D E P and your results and that I would, I'd be, I'll, I'll give you my word that I would make the motion to move them back.
I think we'll know by March with that, uh, next quarter, so.
Okay, I, I have a few questions. Has the school committee memorialized any end date or goalpost at this point for when the kids will go back?
Well, my motion was for, to extend it for one more school year.
But what's the goalpost? What, what, yeah, what are the requirements for, to get them back?
Well, it was, the requirements were, uh, consistent and reliable.
What does that mean?
Well, that's Mary Jude, that was explained earlier on the meeting.
Do you have a timeline?
I, it was, it was, it was the timeline was the consistency.
That's not a timeline, that's just a word.
If you let me finish, the consistency was mimicking that school year, uh, that 180 day period with not counting Saturdays and Sundays. So you can mimic the year so the well can recharge properly and things like that, um, which was, which was, um, I think started January 27th.
So you started January 27th when this was an issue back in, what, when did it start again?
Listen, we're the school district. We're not the water operators.
But you moved the children.
That's right. That's right.
And you didn't have a goalpost until January?
Uh, we, you guys didn't have a goalpost.
We were fixing the water. You moved the children. You didn't tell us why we needed to put them.
You were arguing with your consultant and your water operator. As a matter of fact, one of them quit. Uh, if you want to go back into the details of what was going on that place, everything was unsure, so.
I, I, I really don't want to go backwards. And I agree with Mr. Keith.
I don't either, but I'll, I'll answer the question.
I don't mean to step on you, Andrew. Like I'm, I'm so over what happened in the past. Uh, I'm just going to say, Mr. Keith, Mr. Falco, put the kids back in the school.
We will do it as soon as it's reasonably safe to do so.
D E P is going to be comfortable if they get a good reading this week.
Yep.
Next week, whenever it comes.
That wasn't relayed to us.
She said it last, at the meeting on the eighth.
At our, our meeting?
Yep. She did. She did. Thought so.
The D E P will be comfortable with what?
One more reading.
Comfortable as far as what does that mean?
In fact, she wasn't even in agreement with, with removing them.
Well, it's not their, it's not their authority to remove them.
It's not her authority, but she, she already agreed back then that the kids, I'm talking, she already agreed back then that the kids were not in any way, shape or form, in any harms way, that they did not have to leave the school. You removed them anyway. All right? So now, last week, well, not last week, but on the eighth, she said in, in the library at, at the, uh, middle school, she said that one more good reading and we're off the, off the list of sending out notices, as, as Jennifer said. And at that point, um, we would still supply water for a time being to con, to confirm the consistency stays.
That's right.
And if the consistency doesn't stay, then we keep supplying water.
Right.
But she also agreed that the kids could go back this September or August, whatever, whatever the start date of school.
She didn't say that. She didn't say that whatsoever. She has no opinion on that. She, I, I was there. I was actually.
No, I was there too. And I listened.
Oh, yeah, well, she didn't, you can be.
And she said.
You can point that out to me if you can find where she said that. What, and, and by the way, she couldn't even give you guys an answer when the bottled water directive would be list, lifted because she would need to see more consistent and reliable results.
We already have agreed that we're going to supply water on, as long as it takes to, to, to prove the consistency. And there is no reason to keep the kids out of school any longer than this year.
Right, so that's an opinion. That's an opinion.
That's my opinion.
That's right, and that's fine. And that's fine.
And I, I, I work in water treatment facilities, public facilities all over the state. I see miracles happen pretty quick.
Yeah, well, I'm not really willing to risk the safety and wellbeing of 400 kids on hoping for a miracle. I'm hoping for a solution. And, and that's on, that's on the water commission.
Miracle is just a term, but it's because of the knowledge of, of today's scientists that know how to treat the water. No matter how lousy the water is, it's coming out of the ground or out of a lake, they can treat it and, and feed thousands of people with it.
Yeah, well, that's, that's called competence, not a miracle. So if you have competent people working on a system that can clean the water.
We have, we have some of the best in the state.
It's, it's an educated person that can do that. And I'm, I'm hopeful for that. But we, we were left in a position where you guys don't know when the bottled water mandate is lifted. She would need to see more clean, consistent result. Having, uh, getting to a point where you don't have to post that the water failed is great. But it's not enough, in my opinion.
In your opinion?
Well, it's not enough in my opinion because I'm one of eight people who are charged with putting the, you know, with, you know.
We're charged with the public, we're, we're charged with public safety also.
Yeah, you're also charged with clean, safe, public water. And that's been a difficult task for this board over the last 20 years. So that's in, you know, that's on the record, so, you know, we just have a difference of opinion on that, but.
Absolutely.
But, and I'm, and I'm hopeful that it gets done. And I, I'm a man of my word. I will stick to that motion when that time comes. And I don't want to see those kids out. And, and, and pass that. And that, that's, that's where, you know, I, that's where I stand.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Anything else?
Nothing for me. Well, we don't, we still don't have a timeline.
I know.
So that's fun.
I can give you that timeline.
What is it?
You, you asked me, but the timeline was mimic the 180 days. You have the, which should end sometime, I think it was in November, and you have consistent results of then. And, and, and then we, we put the kids back for the following school year. And that's why I said I'll make that motion. You can smirk all you want, but I'll, I'll follow through.
You made that goal in January. How, you moved the kids and you didn't have a plan till when they would come back?
Because you didn't have clean water.
But you have to make a plan before you move the children.
You didn't have a water operator. And you're going to criticize us for not having a plan. You didn't have clean water and you didn't have an employed water operator at the time. And you, you're battling back and forth. You didn't even know, you were not even claiming responsibility for running the water system at the time. Watch your meetings back then. You know, what do you want us to do? What do you want the district to do?
What was your plan?
The plan was to provide a safe environment for the students at a building that can provide clean, safe drinking water. And that's where they are. And until you can provide that, they'll remain there. And hopefully you can provide that safe, clean drinking water and we can get them back there as soon as possible.
Who advised you that it was unsafe? Like we have Mass D E P and a Dr. Gulick saying it was not, there was no issue. So who's advising you that it's unsafe?
Your water operator that was presented to the school committee back in, in, in May. Bob or whatever his name was, was telling us, you guys, he was on your payroll. What do you want us to do?
He wasn't telling us it was unsafe.
I don't think he ever said it was unsafe.
I'll go back and watch the meeting again.
He didn't, he not, Bob Ferrari even never said to remove the kids.
Yeah.
That's not what he said to us.
All right, I'll re-watch the meeting, April 27th?
You've got your own imagination.
All right, we're moving on from water. We are moving on from water.
My imagination is recorded.
The budget additional considerations of any.
All she said was, don't drink it.
Don't, there you go. All she said was, don't drink it.
Yeah, and we had bottled water.
Don't drink it. They're kids. They're from four to eight years old. Don't drink it. I can't believe you think that's okay.
Well, you just shut the bubbles off and they can't drink.
Shut the bubbles off. There you go. Shut the bubbles off.
Guys, we're done. Okay. I don't have to get out the gavel. Do I have to start bringing out the gavel? I try not to do that. All right. Budget additional considerations.
Karma.
So.
So I, I did share with you, I did meet with Dr. DeFalco today to talk about his budget. I don't want to, uh, he's, he's going to go over the same thing. He, he went over with me and Claudette, Chair of the Finance Committee. We had a good session. I did share with you the schedule that shows the, you know, what we're looking at, um, and the process. I included the reductions to their original budget rollup. Um, but he's going to be going over that at the joint meeting next week. So I don't want to.
On Tuesday, six o'clock?
Blow the steam. Yeah, six thirty. Six thirty is the meeting.
February twenty seventh.
Tuesday. Yep.
Six thirty at the high school.
Hartnett, no, Hartnett Middle School.
Middle School. At the middle school. Okay. Cause one year, last year was at the high school?
It was. Yeah.
Middle School. So I'm going to be there. I think Matthew is probably not going to be there.
No, he's going to be there. He was not going to be tonight, but he is going to be there.
Anybody else? So you posted meeting?
I did post it anyway.
Okay, perfect. You probably will. Oh, great. So I'll have a forum. Perfect.
As well.
Thank you.
Great.
So.
So there'll be discussions of the budget and the impact of the three school model for next year?
Yep.
So we anticipate some savings?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's right. And that, you know, so I've shared with you the basic schedule that shows the end result, which is a, you know, about a two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar increase for Millville.
Savings. Twenty-five thousand savings.
So you, but you'll hear about that next, next week.
Oh, Richard, you're such a character.
And I really appreciate, you know, that, that Claudette could be here and Dr. DeFalco came over today and walked us through that. He and I see things a little differently about some of the explanations, but those are just, will, will be that way.
I think the thing we can agree on is the school district has, uh, cut nineteen full-time positions and a million dollars in materials and supplies. I'd put any single one of any of your departments up to that challenge. And the fact that we came forward of the budget that is actually less an FY twenty-five than an FY twenty-four by eighty thousand dollars.
We have nineteen total in the whole town.
I know. I don't know that, and none of our other budgets are a million dollars. So they couldn't cut them.
But it's nineteen full-time equivalents.
It was significant. Yeah. Okay. No, fair enough.
I'm able to cut like a shoestring.
So anyway.
Claudette, did you want to say anything else about this budget or anything? No? Dr. DeFalco?
But you, you've got materials you can review in advance. Did you have questions for what?
Did you have anything?
Other than the, the summary sheet?
I know. You don't want to come into the hot seat. I don't blame you. I would, I would stay in my seat too.
You have questions?
Well, you know, speaking of the water, if we get that dunk tank, Peter, see how safe it is.
If you have questions before Tuesday.
Okay. I, I don't have any questions right now. Anyone else?
Can we have a dunk tank Tuesday? I think we should, right? Fundraise. We could be. Fundraise it for our community day.
There you go.
Other potential budget challenges here?
No, nothing that we haven't already talked about. Uh, the budgets have mostly come back from the departments. They're being compiled. And then I'll do my thing and present to you a budget, uh, with the column, you know, the asks of the departments and TA recommended amounts and so forth. So you'll see that and then decide which departments you want to bring in. But for starters, you're going to see BMR come, a BVT coming in on the fourth. And their budget is essentially flat or down a little bit based on the way the math has worked out with the same number of students. So not a big increase there. Uh, we did, just got the, uh, the health plan increase and it's four point eight percent versus last year, we were looking at a ten percent increase. And, uh, but then we changed the deductibles and got it down to six. So four point eight's still pretty good, um, compared to things. The retirement thing is up like to eight percent. So all these things add up and be, take big nuggets out of things. We're going to deal with the half of the cost of metacoma, that's sixty-two grand to find a way to pay for in this budget. Um, and we're dealing with, um, you know, a reduction in the, um, amount projected for revenue from, uh, impact fees because we're going to be dealing with a revised agreement that won't allow for impact fees except those that you can identify.
Directly identify.
The cost for. So we'll see where that's at. But we get the sales tax add-on of three percent. So, you know, I don't know where that's all going to fall yet.
Okay. And so BBT will be here on March fourth?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, and then, sorry.
I was gonna, so that's, it'll be twenty minutes, Jerry, and I will have a gavel.
It's only going to be ten this time.
Great.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Real quick.
Okay, perfect.
We don't want to take up too much time.
I don't want to have to use my gavel. I never have it out here because I don't, I feel like.
Probably a good thing you don't have it. Probably hit Peter with it.
It's all right.
Morally.
I said it earlier. I can take hits.
That'd be perfect. But I will give you up to twenty minutes. Anyone who comes to talk about budget, I think budgets are significant. We can, we can just have the twenty minutes, but not twenty-one minutes. Andrew, over to you.
Yep. Uh, so, and just a question about the budget. So we're making sure each department's submitting their budgets this year, correct?
Yes.
According to the bylaws?
Yes.
So is there a department that you're worried about not submitting their budget?
Highway?
Oh, that's true.
I think it's been two years.
Okay.
Yes.
Level funded.
Yeah. I mean, that's what we'll do. If you're not going to ask, then we'll just level fund, I guess.
Level funded, I guess.
Yeah. I think that's, I mean, when everyone else does the work, I think it's fair. I know he's very busy, but we're all.
Yeah, we'll get some. I, I think we'll be fine.
Okay, great. Cause I don't want to have to, feels mean.
I understand.
Anything else, Andrew?
Nope.
Okay. Um. I guess the last thing I'll say on budget is we did talk about level funding kind of everything because of the metacoma eating into the one forty. Like our taxes only go up, we only get a hundred and forty thousand extra dollars. So we'll have to be very tight on that. Um, okay. Anything else? All right. Executive session updates, if any. I don't think we have anything.
I think you covered sort of what you were going to cover.
Yep. And then, um, and we have no updates on, yeah. Okay. All right. So page two, departments. I see nothing. Announcements.
No, nothing.
Public forum.
Just a question.
Yes.
Is anything, um, taking place with the place on Hope Street? I noticed that there appeared to be a bunch of trucks there pulling equipment out of the facility that's down with a, I think it was going to be a pot.
Well, the, the lifted luxury was going to be lifted luxury.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It looked like there was a, a number of trucks there. I saw them.
I don't know anything about Peter.
Pulling things out of there.
Yeah. So they, so they're working closely with the, uh, building commissioner.
Good.
And they're likely going to have to go to the planning committee for a special permit that they need to update. Cause they had a special permit that allowed them to do the lifted luxury marijuana tenancy. They're looking to do something else. They'll have to follow the current building codes. There are some issues back and forth, but it's been well documented and Joe's been on it in a big way with them. But they have, I think stripped out, um, the fit-up that was put in there by lifted luxury because they had built up partitions and walls and things that, uh, their plan is for potentially a, uh, from what I'm told, um, a, a vehicle repair facility. And to do that has very particular code requirements for what you have, you know, for drainage and capture of oil and gas and whatever. And those are, those are important. And Joe's very particular about ensuring that folks follow the building codes on that.
I appreciate that because we have well water everywhere. So.
Responds to your question. Yeah.
Okay.
So nothing specifically approved yet.
All right. Anything else? Public forum? All right. Correspondence?
Nope.
Minutes, if any. I see none.
No.
Selector and reports. Roland?
Nothing.
Richard?
Nothing exciting.
You do?
I'm good.
I'm, I'm good too. I remade my correction with Dr. Gullik being with us until Armageddon. It's not true.
Actually, I, I'll retract that. I'll say that we did have our public safety meeting.
Oh, yeah. How to go.
I think it went very well. So the both chiefs presented drafts and.
Oh, of like strategic plans?
Yes.
That's great.
Yes, they have some drafts and, um, they've got some asks. And I think we can come up with some sort of a hybrid ask and maybe some refiguration of staffing, uh, possibly a fire, maybe police to come up with some sort of, um, you know, like a middle ground here. So there's more discussion to be had and maybe some discussions here on which way we want to take this. But I think we can approve services.
Are there likely to be any budget impacts for FY twenty-five from those discussions?
Well, the, you know, there's, there's certainly some asks here. Um, and there's a way to, you know, improve service. And yeah, so there may be some budget asks.
Let's see. Yep.
I think, you know, we can walk before we run, but there's a way to improve services here for a small amount of money.
Doable.
A little bit. I think it's doable.
Okay.
We'll, we'll have to talk about it.
That would be amazing. Great job, Richard.
I, I asked for a badge.
Such a punk.
You really want the gun.
Nah, I don't need the gun. I just pepper spray. I'd rather just, just spray people, taze them.
Yeah.
That's enough. Jerry told me I can, I can do.
When Erica Blake was on them.
Yeah.
Like ta, the cost of tasers versus guns. And it was like, guns were so much cheaper than tasers. And I was like.
Tasers are more fun though.
But like, but they save people's lives. Like why? I don't, anyways, I don't make these rules.
We're going to have a live session in here, training session, and Jerry volunteered. And so, you know.
Sounds good.
I'm going to retrain everybody.
Peter, tongue?